All right. This meeting of the Southwest Looking Local Board of Education will come to order. It is seven twenty-six on Wednesday, January thirteenth. We are in the District Board of Education Meeting Room. And with that said, I would like to welcome all the visitors here and watching online. And if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hello, we're the Walkins Memorial High School Student Council, and we are here to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge.
Council, and we are here to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Jones, can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Engel.
Here.
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here.
Mr. Zani.
Here.
Okay, quorum is present. We will continue. Any public participation? None? Okay, we have a robust agenda ahead of us. So, would someone like to move adoption of the agenda?
Motion to approve one F.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes. That passes. Um, request to speak on agenda items, Teamsters Local four thirteen. Southwest Looking Education Association. None, okay, we can move on to approval of minutes. Item three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes. That motion is approved, we'll move on to the financial report. Would someone like to move that so we can discuss that?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Mr. Jones.
Clue on agenda is a factual executive summary from December thirty-first, two thousand twenty. Fairly routine month, uh, revenues year-to-date are higher than we anticipated and expenses are lower, which is a good thing, so.
That is a good combination.
Uh, five months into our fiscal year, we are running about a million dollars ahead of what we were anticipating at this time, so. You know, obviously, people at home, not less sub, a lot less sub cost and so forth, but, um, hopefully this continues for the next seven months and we carry it into next fiscal year. I think a lot of specific questions you have, but it was a fairly routine month.
Have we, um, our JDS payments, our JDS one and two payments, have those been coming in in a timely fashion?
No, yesterday I just got JDS two, third quarter and fourth quarter. I can see JDS one, it only comes in once a year.
Okay, okay. I thought I saw on, maybe it was the, maybe not the commissioners, on somebody's notes, I don't remember whose meeting minutes I was reading, but they were saying that the JDS were not coming in at a regular basis, yeah.
Except we just got, yesterday I got this third quarter and fourth quarter. And like JDS one, I do wait the whole year, and you probably don't get to like May or June. Usually wait till it's audited before they give us the money. But JDS two is Amazon, and it was north of five hundred thousand dollars for two payments we got.
Yeah.
Wow, that's awesome.
I know the, it was, revenue was a million dollars more for the year, so.
It was good, yeah, it was a very good year. Well, take it.
Fantastic.
I just wanted to, I knew that we'd been addressing the slowness of the payments in the JDS board, so I was trying to see if the.
Yeah, the fourth quarter obviously came very timely.
Came in quickly, okay.
Third quarter and.
Okay. Hey, any discussion? Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes. That motion approves, we will move on to business items. Er, whoa, got ahead of myself, thank you. Um, moving on to the personnel.
He's trying to move faster.
Exactly. Personnel consent calendar, um, we have six items, we can do them individually, we can do them out once.
Motion six A through F.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes. That is approved, we'll move now on to the business items. Um, we can do them individually, or we can, well, actually, we probably should divvy these up. But I let's do policies first. Anyone want to move six A?
Motion to approve six A.
Second.
Any discussion?
No changes since last meeting?
Okay. Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes, that passes. Um, let's see, B, C, and D could probably
Yeah.
go together.
Motion to approve, uh, six B through D.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Jones.
Yeah, the mental rates returned by the Budget Commission. We don't have a whole lot to say, you know, you can't raise it much, you can lower it if you want to, but honestly, we need all the money included on there. There is about, top of my head, about at least a mil reduction because of the increase in property values, so, uh, I need to, it's going to help, help some.
Right.
So, uh, obviously, this is a new tax year for our substitute levy. The first year starts off the same four point five two five million dollars. So that's what it is this year, then starting in two thousand twenty-two, we'll see increase for new construction only.
Nice.
Okay.
Rick, what, item D there, what, what are some of the major casey?
I can, I can. Um, so we did an MOU with the teachers' union, so this allows them, due to, um, our strange environment this year, to not be evaluated. It also gives, um, the administration the ability to evaluate, um, those situations where potentially there's a non-renewal. Um, we also agreed with the teachers that those that wanted to finish their cycle because they're already halfway through and don't want to start over would be able to do so. So, the union approached that with us and, um, the admins agreed. It's a challenging year, so that is what that MOU is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion or questions? Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes, that passes, we can move on to six E.
Motion to approve six E, the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school calendar.
Second.
So, um, obviously, this is our proposal for the school calendar next year. If you need to take a peek before tonight, I did want to point out that graduation, there's not a date on there, we're still, I'm cautiously optimistic that once the vaccinations start to roll out, that we will, um, hopefully be able to get one of these facilities to be willing to work with us. Right now, that's just not the case. I think until some of the unknowns are gone, nobody wants to commit. So, if we can't, you know, if the board, um, feels like at a certain point, if you don't want to wait past, you know, the summer, I would, I would anticipate by then we should be able to get somebody mailed down that would be willing to work with us to have graduation at their place. And then we'll probably get a rotating, a set date on the calendar, which will be really nice moving forward. So I'd like to wait for that. Um, as we discussed before, I think we're getting a little large to be in the gym. So, that's the only thing that, um, it would be substantial to talk about, and obviously I worked with, um, sleep on the calendar, so.
Okay, have we generally been starting around the seventeenth?
Yes.
Okay. It just seemed, I was curious because it seemed like we were getting out very early in May.
Yep, this calendar is similar, we, um, we took a look at, obviously not this year. So, kind of went the last two years, eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty.
Okay, and again, this allows us a lot of time for calamity days if need be and whatnot, and there will be some extended time for the kids transitioning back to Etna Elementary?
Yes, we built, um, three days in as well for, um, our teachers to unpack and get ready for that transition. Um, in, in January, similar to this year, this year's a little different because they'll learn role learning, but, so they'll have that time as well, that's built in.
Okay.
Correct.
Right. Anyone else?
Questions or?
Okay, seeing none other, Mr. Jones, can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes. That passes, we can move on to, um, six F.
Motion to approve six F.
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion and questions? Um, is there anything you guys would like to say before we get started? Before?
Uh, Dr. Burkin shared with you, uh, the summer courses for changes at the high school. Uh, a few additions in terms of particular art, uh, basically opening up art, uh, or our opportunities for kids by removing the, uh, the prerequisite. Uh, also the, uh, probably the one change you see there is the partnership with the COTC. Uh, you know, for, uh, uh, basically some students could leave, uh, high school with an associate degree. Uh, we will still continue a partnership with Columbus State as well as Shawnee's. So, we're going to have multiple partnerships with, uh, with three different college, uh, credit plus providers.
And if I could add to that, I've, I've been really impressed with the work of, um, Melissa and her team to bring about these additional offerings for our kids. It's, it's a great opportunity, so I'm really excited that this will be happening next year.
This course description guide be posted online on the high school webpage?
Yep, soon as usual, well, not tonight, but yes, as soon as it's available.
Cause I, I found myself looking for it previously, and I know it like was there before and.
On the page.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, I had written you guys, and you guys got back with me very quickly, thank you, um, about some of the fees, and I thought the handbook was great, I loved the new opportunities for getting and the opportunities that we're giving kids. Um, I just, I guess the only concern that I still have is for the EOA fees, I personally feel they're really high. Um, for a required class, um, for thirty dollars being, you know, for EOA one, two, three, and four, and that's a hundred and twenty dollars over the span of high school. And for a required class that isn't elective, I just feel like that's too much, and I appreciate, um, the work you did today breaking down the fee as to what, what things are. Um, but I was curious, we just approved some textbooks for EOA, right? And along with that came some online components, right? So, um, I was just curious, fees are going to this online vocab practice license and vocab books, and then I looked up the novels that you sent, and generally, they were about seven dollars, uh, a piece, so I just wasn't getting to thirty, so I was just kind of curious if that's something we can look at reducing, in my personal opinion, and I'm just speaking for me, it's too high. I tried to do some research, um, with some other school districts, and as you were asking if we had it on our website, I looked up a lot of the districts around us today, and I had, um, a hard time finding anything except for Lakewood, Lakewood charges five bucks for their EOA classes. So, um, I mean, is it enough for me to vote it down? No, it's a great document, I, but I, it's, for me personally, it's a, I would like to see us move to getting the EOA fee lower.
If I could add a couple of things, if you, on our website, um, I'm sorry, our, uh, we have on our SWL literature titles, we have over three hundred titles that we have, from grade six through twelve that are, that are approved. And the, these are consumable, so anytime, I mean, these, uh, students purchase novels for their classes that aren't available on the, uh, with the textbook or with the textbook online component. So, whatever they purchase, they get to take with them.
Okay.
Um, and again, you know, the prices will vary depending on when we, when we can get them and how much we can get them for, so. Uh, and again, some of these novels are required by state's.
Right, and I was just thinking, you know, like Romeo and Juliet, if I have four kids at home, chances are my senior has the book. And my, you know, freshman may not need to buy a book, so I, I don't know. Um, that's just where I am, is anyone else have an opinion on this, or?
Well, in that situation, would he need to buy a, a second book?
I don't think that, uh, what they do is they, if a kid can provide a book, they don't buy the book. So, but again, you're looking at multiple, not looking, they're probably doing more than two, three, or four, so. For example, I know that, uh, one of our EOA, uh, one teachers had five novels, and she couldn't do the one novel because there wasn't enough fee, so she found an alternative, uh.
I mean, do we have like classroom sets of books that kids could use?
Okay, go ahead, sorry, Tan.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we do have some novels, some series novels, but again, with over three hundred titles, and they're constantly updating the, uh, the, uh, title list.
Right, okay, cause.
And I think the older kids like to, you know.
Annotate.
You know, there's a lot, you're teaching them to annotate in a book, and so you're not going to want to, I mean, you can't do a classroom set on a, a paperback.
Don't want to last year to.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's.
I mean, doesn't mean it can't be looked at, John, things can always be looked at.
Sure, sure, I mean, I'm just.
But I would agree, just as a high school previously looking, I would be trying to get ready, you know, some secondary options, so. It doesn't, it doesn't mean that it can't be something that the high school can revisit.
Okay.
Yeah, this comes out, it's not covered by fees, the general fund would cover it for it, so. This is how it works, I mean, they can still get the books, if they charge a fee, it just come out of the, the general fund budget, so that's.
Yeah, I just, I don't know, from, from just, uh, optics perspective, looking at such a high fee, because all the other fees are like, you know, five dollars, the arts are more expensive, but I understand that. Um, just, EOA just kind of stuck out as being really high to me, so, thank you, guys. Anyone else?
My only, and this is just surely, we, it, it seems we've made some super significant progress with, um, AP and honors and, and the state DP in English and math and science. But we've not done so in our social studies department, so I guess my con- concern or my next area to address would be, I would like for us to address that specific AP.
I would agree.
Okay, so that.
We don't currently have anyone interested in seeking the credentials to teach in-house.
Yeah.
Which is, it is what it is.
Yeah, sure.
Um, we actually spoke about that when Melissa presented this plan, it's something I mentioned and, and Tan agreed that that's something we need to get creative with and figure out how to make that, so, I, we agree.
Yeah.
I have to speak for you, but.
Yeah.
I can't see you because you're behind me.
Yeah, they're shaking their heads too.
Why I can't see you?
I guess it's, 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 um, it's not so bold and obvious until you see the brightly lit colors in all of the other, um, subject areas, and then you, so.
There may be, there may be some opportunities for COTC for a college credit plus like college.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And we've also discussed the opportunity of, the possibility of AP cycle, but that's just trying to gauge interest in that.
Sure, but that's, that, that isn't, you know, uh, college credit plus US history and military history, that's not your political science C, those, it's not your deep history kit, you know, it's, 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 so.
Yeah, I think we have to work on that, for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyone else? All right, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes. That is approved. We'll move on to six G, modular classrooms located at Etna.
Uh, I'm motion to approve the selling of the modular.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion on that?
The modular's a little worth a little bit more than five thousand, but it takes them about twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars to remove. So, you know, it's just basically, you don't get it, we had one that offered five dollars, two fifty from, from the heat state schools, they ended up backing out when they saw the cost to move them. Like it was north of a hundred thousand dollars they were quoted to mo- to move them and set them up.
Is there any chance we may need them once the renovation is done? Or would it be worth keeping it?
If, you know, maybe not these, these were purchased used.
Okay.
They're, they're.
And they're all electric.
I've never been in one, so.
The ones we have at Kirkersville and at Tepataski were purchased brand new, they're gas heat, those are ones I would want to keep. More if we got closer to the renovations and we might need them.
Okay.
Uh, this one, I'm fine with.
It served its purpose.
It's served its purpose, it's, it's, it's going to, and it's, it'd be wise to let it go, in my opinion.
All right, any other discussion on that? Okay, Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Okay, that is approved, we will move on to six H, we don't really need a motion for this one, I don't believe, but, um, what'd you say, sorry?
No, there's discussion on.
Um, but Mrs. Moore and myself have been on the abatement advisory group, and we thought it might be good to have a discussion with the whole board regarding future abatement requests within Etna Township. Um, so, I don't know, Mrs. Moore, would you like to open the discussion?
Yeah, I won't, because it's going to probably be longer now after our last Zoom meeting. Um, we had a Zoom meeting with the commissioners, um, Etna Township, Skanel, and they were talking about the fact that Skanel wants to build the two buildings, the first building, they're willing to accept the, um, fifty percent for fifteen years. While we're on that Zoom, the Etna attorney re- back up a little bit, so they, they were, Skanel was presenting to the commissioners, the commissioners said that they needed to see the development agreement. Um, I guess the previous, I'm just going to guess that the previous agreement that was submitted did not include the school district because we were not getting a hundred percent of abatement. And I believe the commissioners came back and basically said, even though they're not giving a hun- the schools aren't giving a hundred percent, they should be getting some kind of compensation. Um, so the meeting was to bring everyone together to discuss the, the, whether or not the commissioners were going to grant the abatement, they already were grant, be okay with the fifteen, um, fifty percent, well, we're okay with fifteen, fifty percent. Um, review the development agreement, that sort of thing. I think that they, we heard that they met on Tuesday of this week. But anyways, the whole thing was, we've got to include the schools, and we've got to play nice in the sandbox, everything like that. The Etna Township attorney chimed in numerous times and explained how that they've been working, they've been trying to work with the district for years on getting a standard uh, agreement to make it easier, to make these abatements easier, we've worked, we've even tried to work with previous agreements that they have with other governmental entities. Um, and, and kept saying, going back to that.
Making us out to look like we're the ones not cooperating.
So, and, and what concerned me, and, and I sent the email to everybody saying, you know, I'm concerned, Skanel during that meeting was very blatant in saying the second building, we must get a hundred percent abatement. No doubt about it, we must get a hundred percent abatement, which concerns me, and I put in my email that I appreciate that they want a hundred percent abatement, and they're comparing to other buildings that currently exist, the problem is, is nothing has changed with the township. We've seen no change. And because we haven't seen any change is the exact reason why we're not doing an agreement with the township that resembles other governmental entities or a thirty-year agreement with it, because nothing has changed. And I think that, I, I just want to make sure that the board is aware that Skanel is going to come to us soon and ask for another hundred percent abatement. And we've kind of said, until things change with the township, we're not going to grant to abatements. As a follow-up to that meeting, Mr. Four reached out to us and tried to open the lines of communication. During the, the discussion, there was a lot of times where Mr. Four was saying, well, that's not how I heard it, or I don't know anything about that. Um, and he, he agreed to some different things, he, you know, he's going to talk to Casey and Rick in reference to, um, future development, future housing developments, things like that, and make sure that we're aware of it. But, and, and what was interesting is, is Mr. Four said, clearly, the, the pulte kickback, and, and as it res- you know, goes back to Skanel, it's all political, I mean, clearly, that's all political in reference to Mr. Hayden. And I kind of chimed in and said, I, I, I can see how it would look like it's all political, but in all reality, this has been something that the board has been discussing for four plus years, at least four years.
Since I've been here.
You know, I, I pulled up a couple of emails where, where Mrs. Engel and I were sitting with the, um, what's his? I can't think of the attorney's name.
Mr. Albers?
Uh, Mr. Albers, and, and you know, that was in two thousand eighteen. So I just wanted to, and, and I sent the email saying, I just want all the board members to know that we're going to be kind of up against a wall because Skanel's going to want a hundred percent abatement. And we've consistently said, we're not giving abatements until things change. And I just want to make sure everybody was aware of that, did I leave anything else?
I don't think so, you covered that very well. Not, I will say it was nice to finally have a discussion with Etna. Um, I think that needed to happen, and I'd like to see that continue to happen. Um, because honestly, without conversation, nothing will change. So, um, it's a good start, but again, we have nothing tangible to point to of things having changed thus far. So.
Can I go back to the fact that this board has had a consistent positive history with granting abatements? Not only granting abatements, but working with the township in the past. When the township has come to us and said, we need this approved right away, we're able to approve it right away, when the township has come to us and said, you know, we need additional funds for infrastructure, the school district said, okay, we will take less in, in the JDS revenue. So I think that, you know, we are in a, a great position because we have a consistent history of being positive with developers and working with them, and I, I think we need to continue that, but I think that things need to change. And we need to just maintain that, it's not something political, this has been happening for, for a while now.
And the, uh, idea of growth is real.
Yes.
I mean, it's there, and it's almost face-to-face with us right now, so, and, you know, that's a very important piece to this puzzle. In my opinion. But.
I just reviewed the commanding commissioner's website, they did a birthday abatement yesterday.
Okay.
Okay.
And that is the fifty percent for fifteen years, which we can live with, correct?
We live, yeah.
It's not the best, but we can live with it, correct?
We don't have to vote on it.
Correct, right, that is by state statute, we have to live with it, correct?
Yes, yes, we, we have no say if it's fifty percent for fifteen years, so.
And whatever's in the DCA agree, the agreement, we don't know, they're not showing that to us.
It wasn't shown on there, it just showed the CRA and, um, the county gave three hundred thousand dollars in payments from it, but plus some jet refuel, so, but we don't, the DCA wasn't attached, that's what they kept saying in our meeting the other day was, they want to see a DCA, but as soon as they saw it, they just didn't put it in their notes.
Is it a part of one of the existing JDS, is it part of JDS two?
I don't, I think it's, I don't know where JDS two, that's exactly.
Okay.
I think this is right beside Amazon.
So that's why I wondered if it was part of J, part of the existing JDS two or not.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's not part of JDS two.
Oh, not J, but J, uh, J, it's another JDS.
It is a J, I don't know.
A J, but not a JDS, maybe.
No, JDS, yes, exactly. J, not JDS.
Gotcha, gotcha.
But there is, yeah, but there is, I know there is going to be a J because they're getting income tax.
Cause they're getting income tax, okay.
Basically, the commanding commissioner said, right, really, the only thing changing is they're splitting up the schools, you're sure.
Right, right.
And just keeping some, and the developers getting some.
Gotcha, right, okay. And, you know, Mr. Buck did say when he was speaking with Skanel that it's not their responsibility to reimburse the developer, that, that the governmental entities should be receiving adequate funding for any kind of abatement.
Okay.
So, just wanted to let everybody know, we're still there, nothing's changed.
Nope. Thank you very much, that was good, and we needed to have that discussion, so. Let's move on to six I, job descriptions.
Motion to approve six I.
Second.
Discussion, Mrs. Perkins.
Uh, so the, um, well, I guess we'll start with the logistics director, so, I'd like to, um, point out that although it appears to be a new position, it's just reconfiguring of current resources, um, and changing, uh, titles, so, um, we'll be shifting some responsibilities in the district, um, next year. So, the logistics director will be overseeing both transportation, and they'll be bringing back a new, uh, a new digital catmeat. So, we're hoping, one thing we have found through this pandemic is that there is a need for that type of learning for a lot of kids. So, we'll be targeting our six through twelve population, both current students and ones that, um, receive services through other. So, we'll be targeting our six through twelve population, both current students and ones that um, receive services through other virtual academies. So, that is um, that particular position, and then the grounds. Oh, sure, yeah.
This, this is gonna be an in-house digital academy, not a legally accepted one like we had before.
Yes, thank you, okay.
This is gonna be in-house digital academy, so it's gonna be part of the school district.
I'll do the direction of this board.
Yes.
This kind of work, yes. And then the ground supervisor, we had a, already had allocated in the five-year forecast, an additional ground member due to our growth and the size of our new buildings and the athletic facility, and I think there's probably no one here that would disagree that, you know, we could use some additional help.
Once all that grass grows on Warrior Way, it's gonna take a while to mow all that.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot to be done, and one person can't do it all. So, um, this ground supervisor position will allow us to have two working people, and I think it will do wonders for our outside facilities, and I think we'll see much, much needed improvement. So, again, that's, that job description, both of those positions, um, will start officially August first of next year. So, are there any questions or?
Will the, um, the, so with the digital academy, that will then eliminate our need for our contract services with Edmentum, is that correct?
No, we'll be using something for the digital academies.
We will, okay.
We will, so, um, and, and Tan can speak up if you'd like to, but they have been exploring, do you want to talk about that?
Yes, I, we had a discussion with another provider, I spoke with the director of the Newark Digital Academy. Now, they're completely different, they're a separate entity, um, they've not tracked out the, uh, the ACE. Um, that's rather costly in accusing their teachers. We're gonna continue discussions with Edmentum, we meet with them tomorrow
Okay.
to kind of get an idea. We did a survey of our existing Edmentum students in grades five through eleven, it was about four hundred and eight surveys we sent out. We've gotten about a twenty-five percent uh, reply, and about a quarter of those students have said that they would like to continue uh, using this platform. Uh, and a larger segment, about forty-four percent, are still undecided. Uh, if, if we're thinking that probably the uh, pandemic has something to do with that, and any of them will come back. But we're also going to, right now, at the high school, we do a credit recovery program through TRECUP, which Edmentum uh, provides a curriculum for TRECUP, so uh, that, that will come under that umbrella as well. So we're exploring a lot of different possibilities.
Okay.
So, we've, um, you know, we were asked, um, someone asked about staffing, and I said, we won't, we won't know what that looks like until we kind of know how many kids, um, Tan's working um, with uh, other individuals to um, send letters and to communicate with kids that are currently um, receive going, you know, like to the higher virtual academies, so to see if any of them are interested. You know, what would it take, what, what do you like about where you go, if we had something type of questionnaire? So, once we have an idea about some numbers, then we'll start figuring out what exactly that looks like, so.
Are we thinking K-12 digital academy?
No, we're thinking six-twelve, six through twelve.
Six-twelve, okay.
We're gonna start six through twelve and kind of see how that goes.
Okay.
Not to say it couldn't expand, but we're gonna start with the high graders.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, you're fine.
If a student wanted to um, take a, a course that maybe we didn't offer in person, um, would they be allowed to maybe have early release and pick up just one specific course um, through the digital academy? Is that something we're exploring as well, potentially?
We are exploring that possibility, that was one of the questions, a blended format. They wanted to do a lot of their core here, and it was an opportunity to take uh, you know, an additional course on Edmentum or whatever the, you know, platform we decided to use. We talked about that, and then we're just wondering how that would fall into the fee schedule. I mean, since we are providing the education here, would they pay for it on their own, how much would that be? So that's, uh, we're, we're, those things are also left.
It's just being, it is being talked about.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I think that's one of the greatest things, if you can find a positive from this year, we've realized that there's a lot of different ways to educate kids, and I think we can do a lot of it in-house. So, this is a really um, great opportunity for the logistics director to come in and start fresh, and, you know, they're already working ground up to figure out what it would look like, so.
Or the funding is, right now, we're sending out a million dollars a year to community schools. So, if we can bring some of those kids back in and keep that money in-house, it's gonna pay for the stuff.
Yeah.
So, definitely worth it if we can do it.
And educate them the way they need to be educated.
Yes, yes.
Which we can do it better, for sure.
True school choice.
True school choice, absolutely.
So, those are, those are the two job descriptions.
Do those need approved?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes. That passes, we'll move on to treasures items, donations, then analysis, I think we can take them together, or we can separate them? I need a motion.
Motion to approve seven A and B.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Jones?
Donations, we always appreciate those, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just timing, getting invoices, got some old invoices that were just sent to us from the ESC Central Ohio. Uh, so then, and then Claritage is a, basically a consultant used for OSEC, and it stayed always even slower, so by the time we got the invoices, we didn't know about coming. You know, I did Bert Sorin, it was late, so that's the reason why, so we're asking the board to approve these three, so we can make payment to them.
I saw with the donation, some of it was for the scoreboard projects we've done. Has all the people that have um, donated, have they, have people been able to keep up with that through the pandemic, do you know?
I don't know for sure, that's something Jake might know.
We can ask him.
Something like that, I don't know that for sure, I know we're, we're still getting donations regularly, I hope and they are, I just don't know for sure.
Okay.
We can check into that, and we'll let you know.
I was just curious. All right. Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes, that passes, um, move on to eight, requests to speak on agenda items, Teamsters, and SWLEA. Seeing no one, um, I believe we're down to number nine, closing item adjournment, I need a motion.
Subdued, second.
Okay, discussion. Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes, that passes, we are adjourned at eight oh three.